Good evening, everyone. Good evening. It worked. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Oregon Board of Education meeting of May 21st, 2024. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance to the flag and a moment of silence. The moment of silence this evening is for Mr. Richard Jones, who was a PE teacher at Koi and at Jerusalem. He's the reason we now have all of the days of, um, he started Dad's Day, and it's no longer Dad's Day, but they still celebrate with those things. And he's the reason that came to Oregon.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Could everybody hear that in the back?
Here you can hear, uh...
Yeah, is there a way to maybe turn up her mic?
And they always told me I'd have a big mouth.
They have to get closer to the mic.
Okay, so we'll try again now?
Yeah.
Okay, so I want to go back to Mr. Richard Jones. He was a PE teacher at Koi in Jerusalem. He started Dad's Day, which now is the field days in our elementaries, and he was a very beloved teacher for a long time. Okay, so the roll call, Mrs. Drew?
Certainly. Mr. Shea?
Brother.
Mr. Eversman?
Here.
Mrs. Muller?
Here.
Mr. Savick?
Here.
And Mr. Zabisky?
Here.
Please silence all personal electronic devices during the meeting. I need a motion to adopt the agenda as written, please.
Tell me.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zabisky?
Yeah.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller?
Yes. Public participation at board meetings. Do you have any cards, Mrs. Drew?
I have no cards.
I have none either, so we can go skip that one. Please be advised that this meeting is being audiotaped and will be available on the district website. So we move on to item six, gap and community recognition. Mr. Gregory?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Oh, is this one on?
Yeah.
So a lot of people here tonight, so we're very excited about the recognition part. This really only happens one time a year where we get to recognize kids from Career Tech and their outstanding achievements that occur throughout the year, but primarily as they go into competition. So we'll get to that in a second, but we also get to honor those that retire and are able to make it tonight. So we have 12 people who are retiring from Oregon City Schools this year that we would at least like to give them a shout out. They're not all here tonight, but thank them publicly for what they've done for, you know, numbers of years, sometimes decades, for us and for the kids and for the staff here at Oregon City Schools. So I think I know who's on here, but if for some reason I miss somebody, please come forward when I call your name. So we're going to go through just some of the teachers that are retiring this year. Our first teacher is Kelly Anderson. Kelly is a teacher of fourth grade at Koi Elementary, and she's been with us 25 years. And I'll tell you, if you know Kelly, she's one of the best ever. So we want to make a big thank you to Kelly and her family for everything she's done on behalf of kids. Our second teacher is Denise Clef. She is a social studies teacher at Facet currently and stepping down. I know she's very excited. I saw her just the other day. And she also has 25 years serving Oregon City Schools, so we thank her tremendously for her impact. Carmella Elmer is a fourth grade teacher at Starr Elementary, and she's been with us for 12 years now, and it feels like we just hired her because I remember when we did that. But we want to thank her for working with our fourth graders there at Starr Elementary. Tammy Hughes. If anybody knows Tammy, Tammy was our gifted and talented coordinator for 28 years, a clay alumni, and a person that just bleeds green and gold constantly, and a person that definitely leaves an impact when you get to know her. Is that fair? Everybody shaking their head. She is a very energetic person who I love. I thank her for everything, and she's actually going to be rejoining us back in kind of a part-time role here in the fall. But thank you to Tammy. And she's a big racing fan, so guess where she's at this weekend, right? Indy. Mary McGill. Mary McGill is a science, social studies, I believe, teacher at Eisenhower, been with us for 20 years. Mary is one of those quintessential teachers that you just will never forget. She is a pure teacher soul from top to bottom, and she actually couldn't be here tonight, but did leave the board members and wrote kind of a little note to all of us on thanking and doing those types of things. So we appreciate Mary very, very much and wish her the best. Lisa Stevens is a PE teacher at Eisenhower and is hanging it up. She is one of the most dedicated PE teachers I have ever met, longtime coach, longtime PhD teacher, a marathoner, has done all kinds of things in her life. Can't thank her enough for everything she has done on behalf of Oregon City Schools, and we certainly wish her the best. Ah, our first one that's here, Pam Bryant. Please come on up. Worked in the cafeteria for, I have 24 years. I hope that's correct, and if it's not, you can certainly correct me. But I can't imagine the stories of everything you've seen in that environment over all those years. I can imagine what you could probably share with the audience. I can, you know, we always fondly, you know, joke about and remember like what it was like when we were in school, right, and what lunches maybe you remember when you were in school, and what was your favorite, and what was your, you know, what wasn't, and all those types of things. You've seen an evolution of so much change, and we can't thank you enough on behalf of the entire district. Here is a certificate, and we would like you to introduce, if you wouldn't mind, who's maybe with you tonight?
My husband, Jeff Bryant.
Jeff, welcome. If Pam, anything you'd like to say, or I don't want to put you on the spot, but I kind of am. So, okay, well, stay right here, and as the other two come up, and then we'll take some pictures. So Mary Jo, Mary Jo Frymark, I know you're here. Come on up. She's going to have to tell you everywhere she's been, because I don't have it on the top of my head. But for the last many, many years, and 29 years in the district, she's been out at Jerusalem as the secretary. And Mary Jo, if anybody knows the importance, we all certainly do within schools, the importance of secretaries, because they are the hub of everything you do, and they basically keep us administrators straight. Tell us when we're wrong, tell us when we're right some of the time, because usually they're right and we're wrong. But obviously, the face of a school is someone that cares about kids, smile, big smile at the elementary school, because, you know, these little kids walk in and don't have a clue what's going on, and a lot of times, families are brand new to the school, and they need to be made felt welcome, and Mary Jo has done that for such a long time. So we thank her for her many, many, many years, almost three decades of service. So on behalf of the board, I'd like to present that to you. And would you mind sharing who's here with you? Nobody. She's by herself. Anything you'd like to say? No? Okay. Well, thank you very much. Christine Pullman is, I don't believe, here, but a bus driver custodian for 11 years of service, so we want to thank her very, very much for her. Sue Lindsay, I know, is here. Come on up, Sue. 33 years. All of the parent professional?
Yes.
I know I met Sue, you know, 20 years ago when I came in, and she was working in a preschool, right, if I'm remembering this correctly, and obviously has been a rock-solid person, you know, when you work with these tiny, 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 tiny little kids and do it with a heart and with love and with care, and then she's moved about, how many different schools have you been in, just in Oregon?
All except Facet.
Yeah, she's been at just about every school, and she was even down at the Sure Center when we had our preschool units just down the road. And if there's someone that is, you know, going to be missed, it's going to be Sue. She took care of us. She took care of not only the kids, but the teachers. She had, I mean, I've heard that countless, countless times. And just walking in tonight, saying, what are you going to do? And, you know, she's very excited about her Route 66 trip and bought a camper. So I'm like, how exciting is that, right? That's what you think of when you think of retirement. So on behalf of the district, Sue, thank you for everything that you've done. And I think you're by yourself too, but anything else you'd like to say?
Enjoyed all my years.
Awesome.
I'm looking forward to it.
We're very, very happy for you. So Sue Ward-Ziegler is a nurse for us, and she retired actually mid-year after 22 years. She also served as a paraprofessional throughout those years and helping kids with special needs, and then jumping back into a nursing role when we kind of expanded our nurses years ago. And we can't thank her enough for everything that she has done. Nurses have become like the most important piece of a school with what they do for kids every single day. So thank you, Sue. And last but not least, I just got to give a shout out. Carol Sankrant was my secretary and probably the last six or seven superintendent secretaries. She was here over 40 years in our administration building. She retired in December, and there was no way I was going to get her here, but I hope she's watching on TV. Carol was something, something else. She was amazing at making you feel, you know, just good about yourself, always willing to help, just knew what to do. I mean, she ran the district, right? I mean, she knew everything that was going on. She knew about everything that was going on in the community. She was a parent of kids that went through our district, and she's just something, someone that will always be in my heart and that I appreciate and will always care for as long as I am around. So Carol, I know you're not here, but thank you for the 40 years of service and the four decades working with Oregon City Schools. So Mr. Sandwich, would you get a couple of pictures, please? Get one with just them, and then I'll jump in one. Congratulations. We'll get you those pictures, too.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out. Want me to keep going and invite?
Mrs. Bin?
Mrs. Bin up. I will invite Mrs. Bin for the beginning. She's got this. She's got this.
Okay. Welcome, everybody. I am Miss Bin. I am the Career Tech Director here at Oregon City Schools, and tonight we'll be recognizing those students that have competed at the state and national level. We do have six student organizations. Our first one is Educators Rising. This is our new, this aligns with our new Teaching Professions program. So they did work hard within the classroom and did competitions at the local level, so hopefully next year we see them here with winners in the state and national level as well. But our first program that we'll recognize students in is BPA. This stands for Business Professionals of America, and this organization is for our programming and software development students. We currently have 14 students enrolled in BPA. There were 13 students who competed at states, and of those eight, or out of those, eight placed in the top 10. And we had two students who recently went to nationals in Chicago, Illinois, with one of those students who received first place at nationals. I welcome Rhonda Hildebrien to announce the students.
Um, yeah, so we had another very successful year with BPA. This is 12 years in a row we've gone to nationals and had somebody on stage. And third time for me getting a national winner, so it's pretty exciting. But we'll introduce, I'm going to go kind of in order, not really in alphabetical order, but contest order, I guess. So Logan Howell is a senior. He competed in intermediate word processing. Michael Har, he chose not to go to states, but he did qualify for state in computer security. Then we have Dominic Schrader. He's here. Yep, come on down, Dom. He competed in integrated office applications. I told him to bring their bling. Then Rivers South, she's also competed in integrated office. She's not here as well. And then we had a computer animation team, and that would be Colin Burkey and Dylan Champion. Colin is here. They placed sixth at state. And so that was good for their first junior year experience. Then we had our administrative support team. This was a team of seniors. Ali Abdul-Razak, Rowan McQuerry, Logan Shoemaker, and Eric Tamlin Jr. They placed eighth at states this year, one better than last year. Then Jane Mays, she competed in fundamental spreadsheets, and she was really, really close to being onstage, just missed it. But she's also a junior, so she'll be back next year. And then for my two national competitors, we have Andrew Ambroski. He competed in database applications. He finished fifth at state level. And then continued on to Chicago. So he is going to be our experienced nationalist for next year. And then Miss Emma Fuller, she'll make me cry. She was our senior BPA president as well, so she's the big national winner. She's got her plaque here. But we're really proud of her. It's an amazing accomplishment to win at nationals. She was third at state, so she not only beat everybody that beat her at Ohio, she, because the girl that got second at nationals was the first-place winner at Ohio. So we surpassed them, and it was an amazing accomplishment. I screamed really loud, so, and I think her mom did too, and everybody was really excited. And it was her birthday, so she turned 18, got to be a national winner, and everything on the same day. But we're very proud of them, and they kept the tradition going. That's always my threat when they walk in the classroom. You can't break it. We've gone 12 years in a row, so next year will be, no, you can't break it again, so.
Rhonda, I got a question, just because a national winner is a pretty special thing, and we want to congratulate all the kids, but that is a very special, when we say national, what does that mean? Are there competitors from around the entire country?
Yeah, we have 26 states, but we also now have China, Peru, Haiti, Canada, and South Korea that also come in and compete, so.
And so she took first place
First place.
From all these countries, all these states
From all these countries.
In this area. How did that feel? Can we ask her how that felt to win?
It was definitely, it was a whole crazy moment, because at states, like knowing that once they called second place, and it had been the first-place winner of Ohio, I was like, oh, well, like, I know I did good, but like, that's okay, like, I did my best. And when they called my name, it was like surreal. And it was, now, like, the whole ceremony was like, everybody was spread out, so it was a lot different. And without, like, having a bunch of other people near me that I knew, it was a little stressful, but it was, it was a lot of fun, and I was very excited.
Can you make sure you're in the green?
Thank you. Our next organization is DECA. There are current, this program is tied with marketing, and there's currently 44 students in DECA. 25 students made it out of regionals and attended state competition. We had two students attend nationals this year in Anaheim, California. I welcome the teacher, Catherine Segan, who will announce the competitors.
Yeah, so as Becky mentioned, we had over half of our DECA chapter make it to the state level, which was really exciting for us this year. I'm going to name the state qualifiers and competitors, and then I'll talk a little bit about our national competition. So these are just in alphabetical order. So first we have Jonathan Carter, and he placed ninth in the state competition at financial consulting selling event. Next up, we have Lily Collins, and she was an amazing competitor at the state level for hospitality and tours of professional selling, another selling event. Next, we have Bryce Cullen. He placed 11th in the state in hotel lodging series, and he did a really great job at that. And then we have a team of three, Ian DeWitt, Ian Judd Lockey, and Carson Wilkins, and they all competed together, got 10th place in the state for business services operations research, and they did a really great, long 20-page paper for that one. Next up, we have Remy Gallegos, who also did an amazing job in another one of our selling events. She was in the professional selling event, and I'm not sure if she's here. Next up, Brooklyn Gilstore. She placed 11th in the state competition in our entrepreneurship startup business plan. She created an amazing business with her partner. She ended up competing by herself at the state level, so she did a really great job. Next, we have Abby Huntermark. She placed eighth in the state for apparel and accessories marketing series. And then last but not least, we have our two state competitors and national competitors. So at the state level, they competed together in a buying and merchandising team decision-making event, and they qualified ninth in the state. And then they also headed to our national competition. So that goes to Natalie Gibbons and Krista Solman. Yeah, so as I mentioned, Krista and Natalie, they were able to attend our state, or sorry, our international competition. They also put in a lot of really hard work to be a part of our school-based enterprise, which is the Eagle Exchange, if any of you are familiar with the shirts that we sell at the football games and different events throughout the school year. Krista was actually our head manager of the Eagle Exchange, and Natalie was our product merchandising manager. And so they together wrote, what was it, like 45, 50-page manual about our school store, which is a huge fee, especially for a senior who's very busy, working and doing all the things. So I'm really proud of them, and that's what got them to the national level. We were able to go to Anaheim, California for a week, which was really amazing. And at the end of April, all three of us had never been to California, so it was a really cool experience. We got to go to Disney and Universal, and of course, compete at the international level. There were 25,000 students from around the world competing there in the DECA competition. So there were a lot of people, but it was really amazing to be there. And we were just, you know, really happy to experience that international competition, and I hope they feel the same way, so.
FFA is our next student organization. This goes along with our Ag and Environmental Program. There are 87 students that are members of FFA. Our advisors are Mrs. Wolf and Mrs. Garlick, who cannot be with us tonight. Of those 87 students, there were 25 who moved on to state competition, and we will have two students who are contenders for our national competition. Their nationals isn't until October of next year, so we won't know that for the school year. So if I call your name, please come up. Ethan Bench. Caleb Benedict. Peyton Brown. Lily Coughlin. Alexis Kuznow.
Ethan Bench, Caleb Benedict, Peyton Brown, Lily Coughlin, Alexis Kuznow, Emily DeLeon, Cassidy Eck, Michaela Free, Kylie Herrick, Madison Knott, Caitlin Loner, Nivea Mitchell, William Murray III, Darren Myers, Rebecca Norden, Tristan Ogburn, Kelsey Osborne, Braylon Rogers, Camden Seacord, Braylon, oh, sorry, Braylon Sheets, and Elena Tolz. Okay, congratulations. HOSA is our next organization. It stands for Health Occupation Student Association, and is a student organization for medical technologies. We currently have 38 students enrolled, and 14 of those members competed at state. Two students will continue on to nationals at Houston, Texas in June. So I'd like to introduce Carrie Bluit, who is the HOSA advisor, and will announce her
Hey, everyone. I'm Carrie Bluit, I'm the med tech instructor here at Clay, I'm in my second year. So in my second year, I feel like we had great success with these students. I had 14 students that went to state competition. So I'm going to go ahead and read their names, and kind of go through that briefly. If anyone doesn't know what HOSA is, it is our health organization, student organization, and we cover all kinds of different areas, anywhere from veterinary science, to nursing assisting, to mental health, to speaking, to debating, all kinds of different things. So anyone in the medical technologies can really foster any of the love that they have for any area that they're interested in. So I will kind of go through and read these names. I have three wonderful students that came today, so I'd like to bring them up. But the first one is Hannah Comer, she's unable to be here. Gianna Kataya, she's one of my juniors returning. Annie Duffer, Addison Fair, also a junior. Ava Garcia. Elizabeth Kent, she's unable to be here. Gabriella Lengel. Christiana McCourt. Oh, Ava Garcia is here, oh, come on up, Miss Ava, I didn't see you. So Ms. Ava competed with taking a test, she did pathophysiology, yes, and was able to actually score high enough, I kind of threw her in last minute, she was able to score high enough to go to state. And so she competed in state, it was just a multiple choice test, so she studied for that, I was very, very proud of her. All right, Natalie Nelson. Riley Raybert, who is also a junior. All right, so I have Corinne Saris, she is one of my seniors, I'd like to bring her up and share a real quick story. Corinne, I'm very, very proud of this young lady, she was my outstanding senior this year. Corinne, during spring break, was in a Miami airport, and somebody had fallen and had a seizure. And Corinne was there with some family members, and Corinne did not hesitate to jump into action. She went to that student, gets me emotional, she went to that person, provided care, put them on their side, and went and got an AED, and nobody else was really helping. So I'm very, very proud of her, that she took the skills that she learned in class. She had the integrity to actually do something, to jump into action, and she actually really made a difference for this family, so I'm very, very proud of her. Also, Corinne is competing with Michaela, who I'll bring up, and she's doing mental health promotion. It's been a big plug for her, and she, her and Michaela are a team, they're actually competing in nationals in Houston. We're leaving June 25th, and going to Houston, where they're going to compete with their project, mental health promotion, it's amazing. Beth Sudo, she is here today. Beth has been my quiet girl that has come alive this year, and she actually competed with prepared speaking, brought all of us to tears. I know Ms. Segan was part of, I had people come in to listen to their speeches to help them practice, and Beth was able to do that, and just brought us all to tears with how far she's come. So I wish Beth would have joined us in nationals, but she had some tough competition, and I'm just very, very proud of her, and so glad she could be here tonight. And the second part of mental health promotion is Michaela Vaughn. Michaela is also one of my seniors that participated in mental health promotion, and she's going to nationals, Corinne and her are going to nationals in Houston. So I get to go with them, it's going to be fun. Do some competing and some beaching, maybe, I think. The last one I have is Natalie Wieland, and she's unable to be here tonight. Thank you very much.
This is our largest student organization. It includes students from our auto program, advanced manufacturing and machining, our engineering program, construction trades, cosmetology, and culinary arts. We have 170 students in Skills USA, and 16 of those students competed at the state level. This year, we did not have or achieve any national competitors. Anna Skinner is our advisor, and Sarah Fox is the assistant advisor, who will be announcing the names.
Hello. First, we have Anthony Aziz. He was part of the Quiz Bowl team, there were five members. Quiz Bowl was actually very competitive locally here at Clay. It was one of our biggest competitions, we had eight or nine teams competing, so this was quite a feat to make it to state. Nancy Brown is part of the opening and closing ceremony team. She placed, the team placed seventh in the state competition. Ivan Berkey for the Quiz Bowl team. Jayden Cassidy for the Quiz Bowl team. Rankin Cassidy for additive manufacturing. Andrew Deffinet for precision machining. Ivan Harvey on Quiz Bowl team. Jersey Martin on the opening and closing ceremony. Pearson Leonard for opening and closing ceremony. Courtney Miller for opening and closing ceremony. Annabelle Nagy for opening and closing ceremony. Bobby Putry for auto and light repair. Aubrey Scoberry for opening and closing ceremony. Gabriela Shannon for additive manufacturing. Marissa Yanas for opening and closing ceremony. And Joseph Yorito for Quiz Bowl. And just a quick note on the opening and closing ceremony, they placed seventh in state, sorry, but it doesn't tell the whole story, they scored 95%. One of their biggest deductions was actually the attire. So we had five of the seven members were juniors, so we are very excited to compete again next year. I know they had a lot of fun, so hopefully we go to nationals. So congratulations, everyone.
Thank you for allowing us to come tonight, and be recognized for all of their achievements. One thing I'd like to add is, we had our decision day last Friday with our class of 2024. This year, we invited the entire class. Last year, we did the same thing with decision day, but we just had career tech students. And Mr. Jersky was like, that was great, let's do it for everyone. So I just wanted to share the results of that. What decision day is, is where we celebrate the four Es, which is employment, enlistment, enrollment, and entrepreneurship. In the class of 2024, there are 75 students who stated that they were entering employment, eight who are enlisting into the military, 130 who have enrolled in a college or trade school, and eight who will become an entrepreneur. I just wanted to end with that note, thank you.
Yeah, and if any of these students and their parents want to leave, you're welcome, instead of staying for a meeting.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out.
Yes, ready to go. Always a little bit of a hit to my ego that nobody wants to stay for the finance report. Thank you for. Tonight, of course, we go through and we update our five-year forecast. I have it fairly simplified, because in my world, the five years is simply about the trends the district's faced with. And on our summary report here, you can see that the revenue and expense lines are crossing, meaning that expenses are falling over our revenue just at the end of this fiscal year. So we will begin the process of, you know, using up some of our cash reserves, and we have very strong cash reserves. So just, our entire forecast is actually, stays in the red, but we will need to, you know, be careful of where we're headed. The one thing, I wanted to make sure, when you're looking at the forecast, there was a presentation difference, it's a reclassification. In the past, we used to receive tangible personal property taxes, I beat that dead horse when we lost it. But we still had the line item, and so we've moved the public utility receipts out of real estate taxes onto that line. I think it's a clear way to track them, so you'll see the changes. It's also, you know, reminding everybody that our public utility property, we do actually receive increases, it's actually taxed at the full vote of millage versus rollback millage. So that's, it's just a nicer way to do that. In the past, auditors, local, county auditors would have to keep it with your real estate taxes, but since property taxes are gone, we're moving it to that line. So I, hopefully you can track that, and we'll keep our eye on that, because that's been a nice source, it's a good five million, right under $5 million for us, so that's a nice source of revenue. I provided the notes, the financials, so you can go through and see the, how the estimates, we've got the revenues. The second page of my forecast is the revenue estimates, three years prior, and the revenue estimates. This year, we did add, there were some modest adjustments to the current year, we usually don't do much of that, but I adjusted the foundation amounts to what's the latest run, or the foundation formula. We did get like $172,000 for high-quality instructional material supply, so that needed to be added in. So that's some of the adjustments, I, they weren't huge, but I wanted you to be aware of some of those. The next page will show a recap of next year's salaries, and then after those years, we simply go based on the cost of our steps. You just use the cost of the steps moving forward in the forecast, those are the largest portions, and then the footnotes, which you can, or the assumptions, you can take your time on those. Just wanted to highlight a few items. Overall, it's, we're in a good situation, so it's hard for me to say that sometimes, it's a treasure, but we're solid through the five years. So that's room for celebration, but we will need to be careful, because, you know, whenever those lines cross, whenever revenue is lower than the expenses, you're going to have to start making some tough decisions. So that's for another day. Other items that were passed out, I did update the permanent appropriation measure. That, the major adjustment was general fund, I also added in, because we did receive the career tech construction monies, we got the 1.6 million, they actually sent it, so that's included in, now that we have the monies. So, yeah, hey, Becky, that's exciting, isn't it? All right, so that is all of that. So I just wanted you aware that that is the majority of the adjustment I'm here. And then the last few items, some miscellaneous points I wanted to point out, is we have finalized the process, our employees are getting their reimbursement expenses through ACH, so that's good. We'll get the purchase orders moving for next year, once we get this approved, and we can get the expense amounts in. Pushed physical inventory back, this was the last week of school, and they said they were coming, and that would have created a level of chaos that none of us needed, so it's going to be on the table, but it's probably going to be September, just a heads up. And my final is, once again, every year, I just put it in your mind that we might go on a late June board meeting, so we can verify the final closing. So unless there are questions, that is my report, we can dig into more of the details on the five-year at a future meeting, I just wanted to get it in front of you, and let you see where we're at.
Thank you, Mrs. Ruth, may we have a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
Remove.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Zviski?
Yes.
Mr. Sadek?
Yes.
Mr. Shae?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulner?
Yes.
Executive session, item eight, do we have any need? Hearing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that members of the board wish to pull from the regular meeting consent Hearing none, a motion is needed to vote on the consent agenda items. A motion, please?
Remove.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a quick question, Carl.
Sure.
Are we doing both fall and winter sports, it looks like, in the number four, independent softball coaches and stuff?
I think what you're going to see there is the winter head coaches, but not all the assistants.
Okay.
And we've kind of landed on that, Joe and I have talked a while, and we've been kind of, we felt like the need to make sure the head coaches are hired going into the year, so, but the assistants are, but the fall assistants are on there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion or questions? Can we get the roll call, please?
All right, Mr. Shane?
Yes.
Mr. Sadek?
Yes.
Mr. Zviski?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulner?
Yes.
Would you like to introduce new teachers, please?
All right. So it's always exciting, we're winding up our new teacher hiring for the year, we only have a couple, but we have two of them that are with us tonight, so would Sarah please stand, and she's going to be language arts at Clay High School. So we're very excited to have her on board, and just from my half hour talking with her, there's a lot of energy in these two young ladies that are coming to the district, which is just fantastic and exciting, so, so thank you for joining us and being a part of the Eagles.
Thank you.
Yep. And we have Megan Phillips, who is going to teach language arts, social studies, at Eisenhower Intermediate School. You can see that big smile, and that's what it was when we met, and I know she's very excited, so we are super happy to have them as part of our team, so welcome.
Thank you.
Yep, yep. That's all the two tonight.
Okay, thank you. So we will be moving on to new business, and I do have a statement from the board prior to going into new business. Your Board of Education will now vote on a leadership transition plan for Oregon City Schools. There are two components to this plan. Number one- Number one, the transition of our current superintendent, Mr. Hal Gregory. And number two, the welcoming of Dr. Jim Fritz, who will serve as associate superintendent to Mr. Gregory for a period of two months before becoming our superintendent. When the board developed a new strategic plan, which was measurable more than a year ago, it was our goal, knowing that the district would be undergoing multiple changes in senior leadership in the immediate future, the goal to create a seamless transition for our key positions, to continue the positive momentum of Oregon City Schools. We are thrilled to attract a proven professional like Dr. Fritz to continue the growth of Oregon City Schools. And we are also very proud of the performance of Mr. Gregory, which has greatly benefited our community. It was our intention as a Board of Education to hire the associate superintendent to spend the upcoming school year, working with Mr. Gregory, to ensure a smooth transition to the superintendent's position upon Mr. Gregory's retirement. During the search for an associate superintendent, the Board of Education was approached by the leadership of North Point Educational Service Center regarding potentially hiring Mr. Gregory before the expiration of his contract with Oregon City Schools. In what was very, a very sensible scenario, all of the parties worked seamlessly together on an expedited transition of experienced leaders. So moving to item A, the superintendent transition agreement, we need a motion to approve the superintendent transition agreement for Hal Gregory, beginning August 1st, 2024 through September 27th, 2024. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? May I have the roll call?
Mr. Sadek?
Yes.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner?
Yes.
And thank you, Mr. Gregory, for your service.
Thank you very, very much. Well, I have a lot more to say.
Yeah, it's done, yes. Item B, associate superintendent, superintendent employment contract. I need a motion to approve the administrative contract for Dr. James Fritz, beginning August 1st, 2024 through July 31st, 2028. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Yeah, you have a second? Mr. Zavisky, did I hear you?
Yes.
Thank you. Discussion?
Roll call. Mr. Sadek?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner?
Yes.
Congratulations, Dr. Fritz, for having me here. And Mrs. Fritz, too. Congratulations. Okay, item C, graduating seniors. I need a motion to approve the list of Clay High School graduates pending fulfillment of state and local requirements. May I have that motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I, is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Mr. Sadek?
Yes. Congratulations.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner?
Yes.
Item D, the agricultural building addition project. Bids were received as follows for the Clay High School Agricultural Building Addition Project. Key construction totaling $1,283,295. KCS construction totaling $1,357,592. And Midwest contracting base bid totaling $1,377,550. We need a motion to award the bid to key construction. This project is funded through the OFCC grant. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? May I have the roll call?
And that was Mr. Eversman. Good, excuse me.
I go, yes.
Gotcha. Mr. Sadek?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner?
Yes.
Item E, safe routes to schools. I need a motion to approve a resolution authorizing support for safe routes to schools and the adoption of the Oregon School Travel Plan. May I have that motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Can we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Sadek?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner?
Yes.
Item F, our curriculum purchase. I need a motion to approve the following curriculum materials purchased. Seventh and eighth grade ELA, not to exceed $40,000. Seventh and eighth grade science, not to exceed $40,000. Biology, not to exceed $25,000. And world history, not to exceed $25,000. May I have a motion, please? I think that's good.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
Mr. Sadek?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulner?
Yes.
Item G, donations to the district. I need a motion to accept the following donations. John and Chris Keigler and family donated $5,000 towards the Coy Elementary Playground surfacing. For cat, restaurant, equipment and supplies, donated $1,500 toward the Clay High School Culinary Food Truck Competition. Pet Fanatics donated a 55-gallon dish tank with supplies to Vassett Junior High School with an approximate value of $500. The Coy Parents Group Association donated $10,000 toward the Coy Playground. And Next Level Concrete donated labor and materials with an estimated value of $4,500 for two concrete walkways to our multipurpose turf playing field. May I have a motion, please?
So moved with our gratitude.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Sadek?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner?
Yes.
And we're always grateful for all these donations. They're what help our school finances. Athletic trips? We need a motion to approve the following high school athletic trip. The football team to Grand Valley State University overnight camp from July 22nd and 23rd. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I just want for the superintendent, have you, what if there would be an indigent person for that? There's a cost there of $150 per participant, and I know that would be...
Well, these, these types of trips are always funded through the, uh, the nonprofit organization and football team, the fundraising arm.
Right.
Well, that's, we have that in our district.
Yeah, it's through the district.
It's through the district, 300 account, yeah.
But there's, there's not like a, I guess, a process for someone that can't go.
Well, I just, I just wondered if they, if you had heard from the athletic director?
I know Mr. Kiss put a, no, I have not.
Okay.
Mr. Kiss does have a description of the trip, but I can follow up with Mr. Kiss on that if there's a...
I just wondered, I mean, there's always that extra out there that somebody may be indigent. I just wondered.
Okay.
That's all I have, Dan.
Any other discussion or questions? Roll call.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
Mr. Sadek?
Yes.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner?
Yes.
Item I, disposal of materials. From Clay, a Cincinnati Mill Horizontal. And item B is a Cincinnati Mill Horizontal. And item C is an index mill. And from Jerusalem, we have a USI laminator. May I have a motion for disposal, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Mr. Sadek?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner?
Yes.
Item J, disposal of equipment and materials. The items listed in the April 16th agenda for disposal have been disposed of in accordance with board policy. And moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Mulner. So I guess I just want to start with congratulating Dr. Fritz and, and his wife, Robin, and welcome them with our big hearts and open arms to Oregon City Schools. You know, I've known Dr. Fritz just from this position and meetings over the years and, and he's been such a mentor to me and, and a wonderful person to me. And, and he's going to be an absolute home run for Oregon City Schools. So I'm very, very proud that, that he's going to lead the district in the future. I truly appreciate the board working through this process, all of you. Thank you so much. Uh, you know, three months ago, maybe this was even thought of or, or even an idea. And then through the course of, of, you know, different situations coming about, um, you, you were all able to come together and really, uh, you know, support both Dr. Fritz and myself and then also the district. So very, very good, uh, way of, of, you know, working on behalf of the community. And certainly want to thank Mr. Sadek and Mrs. Mulner for leading that effort. I know we've had a lot of conversations and meetings and you guys have all had, I know, even 10 times more than, than I was involved in. So thank you to both of you sincerely for everything that you're, you're doing. Um, you know, the, the overlap we're going to have for two months is, is, uh, I think kind of a luxury, you know? It's not something that normally happens within school districts. Uh, and given this circumstance, it is. And, uh, it's not like I need to teach Dr. Fritz how to be a superintendent, but, but I can introduce him to, to people in the community and to our leadership team and to our teachers and to our staff and, and help understand where we're at and what we're doing great at and what we can do better at. And, uh, and he can hopefully then take that and, and run with it. So, uh, again, very excited. I would do want to thank the bittersweet moment. I didn't know what I'd feel like. I mean, I still have months here yet, so I don't feel like, like I'm walking out the door tonight. Uh, it may feel different in September, but you know, having 20 years at any place, right? I mean, and others have had more, but 20, 20 years in administration is, is, uh, you know, a feat I never thought I would achieve. And I'm sitting here now at this point and, and you know, I'm looking at the admin team that I've worked with for almost that entire time and made a lot of friends. You know, that's, that's the part that, uh, that I'll miss the most. But, but thank you to the board and certainly to all the OCA staff and to our community for letting me be a part of the district for 20 years. So with that being said, I just want to congratulate Dr. Fritz and Robin again and welcome them to the community. And, and we'll, we'll probably be meeting here in June and maybe a little in July and then on, on into the next year. So, so again, thank you and, uh, I appreciate everything very, very much. Okay. And then, Dan, if you would maybe talk academics?
Very, very short report. Grades are final on May 29th. The, some very important dates coming up for everyone. I can explain why some of our, our students were not here tonight. Exams start for the high school tomorrow and they will continue for three days. The last day of school is May 24th, uh, coming up this week. And most importantly, to all of our families and the folks in the community, graduation is a week from Sunday. That's on June 2nd at 2:00 PM at what was formerly known as the Seagate Convention Center, now known as the Class City Center in downtown Toledo. So congratulations to all of them. We are just starting to get the numbers back from the OST tests. Uh, we'll go do a deeper dive coming up here for our meetings coming up in the next couple of months. I think one of the things that really comes out is we've had some major, major improvement in the facet in the Clay High School areas especially. And we are very grateful for everyone working together to help lift those, those scores for us. And like anything else in life, there's plenty of opportunities as well. So we're going to be doing a deep dive as we go forward on the OST results.
Awesome, thank you. And just a couple of real last updates here capital improvement wise. Um, you know, summer work's going to begin right away. So next Monday, school classrooms and, and hallways will be filled with, uh, with, uh, equipment and so forth. You just approved tonight the new greenhouse and animal housing facility. So that's going to start this summer and that'll be about a year-long project if I remember kind of timeline. So I don't know exactly when that might start. Dean, do you know a bit? Right away?
Right away.
Okay. So that's going to be started right away. And then to cap it all off, which I'm very excited about it, we had a donor that donated funds to paint our smokestack and, and very, we kind of have a rendering now that's, um, you know, we've kind of settled on, which is a gigantic eagle. You know, Clay eagles on it, kind of a sky and a giant eagle and kind of a, I don't know, waterway, I don't know. I mean, so Dean Davis, you know, Clay graduate that we all know and has been around and really supporting a lot of us in a lot of ways will be starting that also, I think, pretty, pretty darn quick, if not right after school. So weather permitting, that, that'll take about three weeks. So we're going to do a time lapse, uh, camera painting. So that's going to be really interesting to watch him do his work kind of in a front row seat. So very appreciative of that donation. And there's a rendering in your, in your packet there. But all in all, those are the fun little things that, you know, a superintendent you love to see and you love to see progressing. And sometimes, you know, aesthetics mean more than anything else, just making it feel good and feel prideful. So I think the smokestack will be definitely doing that. And thank you to Mr. Shane, which he, he got that back all cleaned up. We got the dumpsters out of the way and the fence removed all, all within a few days. So appreciate his efforts. And that's my report.
Thank you. Any questions? O business? Anyone have o business?
I do one follow-up, please.
Sure.
Uh, just to follow up something I've been keeping the board and those in attendance aware of, Memorial Day is upon us here. It's a very important weekend. On Saturday, the, uh, the family of Airman Jack Coy, 1941, Clay graduate, uh, who was just recently identified his remains through DNA, is coming home Thursday night, uh, 5:13 PM to Detroit Airport. And he'll be brought to Eggleston Minor, uh, Ably Funeral Home where he'll rest. Continued, and then on Saturday, uh, the family, they have an open visitation here at Clay High School in the gymnasium from 1:00 to 3:00. And at 3:00, there's a ceremony or an opportunity, I guess, for any organizations that have a tribute or they would want to have a wreath or something, that they can do that at 3:00 PM, uh, here in the gymnasium. Then on Sunday, the burial with full military honors will take place at 12:00 noon sharp at Willow Cemetery, 1961 Pickle Road. I advise everyone, if you're going to come to this, get there early. Uh, there is limited parking there. If this really attracts lots of other folks, it is open to the public. And if you, I mean, probably none of us here saw, have ever been to a burial of a World War II veteran. And to see a full military funeral with Father David Kirk, who is living in our community, he's a Catholic priest through the Diocese of Toledo, but he also had a career in the Army as a chaplain and ascended to the rank of a major and spent three years as a senior Catholic priest at Arlington National Cemetery. Not only doing burials in, in that faith, but where there was, uh, no faith specified by someone being buried at Arlington Cemetery, all of the clergy pitched in and did non-denominational services. And then finally, after he's laid to rest, uh, then on Monday, we will do our traditional Memorial Day observance. Uh, and I remind everyone, the football stadium in 1948, 49 was, uh, designated memorial, it was a war memorial when it was being built. And on the plans, it says that right on there. And it is there that they have the memorial garden, which has our World War II, our Vietnam, Korea, and our Defense of Freedoms, uh, memorials. So we will do that at 11 o'clock. And we have the Clay High Choir coming, uh, with director, vocal choir director, Tom Snead, and about 16, 17 students are going to come and they're going to do the National Anthem and then three very, very poignant songs. So, uh, anyone that wants to come see those things are all open to the public and I'm sure your presence will be, be appreciated. That's all I have.
Anyone else with o business? Anyone else with oh business? Okay, board discussion? I want to thank Mr. Sadek for all his hard work in getting these contacts together and interviews and everything else. He's just been my left-hand man. And I do want to call attention to Mr. Fritz's shoes. You really need to look at them because he's becoming an eagle really quickly. So thank you, Mr. Fritz. They're really great shoes.
I like the tie, too. The tie's pretty nice.
You must go to a run someday and see, it's almost a fashion statement amongst the runners. I paid attention working the one that came through downtown Toledo. And so many colors and so many styles.
Well, that fits because Mr. Fritz is a runner.
Yes.
So, and his lovely wife also is dressed in green and white. So they're becoming a partner. So thank you very much. Anybody else?
I would just like to say again, Mrs. Mulner, too, that I think that the citizens of Oregon can be very proud. We have had an amazing leader in Mr. Gregory for many years now. He's just really done a wonderful job leading this district. And, you know, when you have a district that's trending upward in every single area, it becomes very attractive. And I think because of the work that's been done by everybody in this district to really help Oregon schools on the map, we've been able to attract a proven superintendent like Mr. Dr. Fritz. And I think we are very, very fortunate that we have a district that would attract the interest of someone who has really, really done an amazing thing. And if you look at the state test scores in Ohio under Dr. Fritz, Anthony Wayne ranks in the top 7% of the entire state of Ohio. He's a proven leader. And we're very, very grateful that he has decided to make this his next stop in his academic journey. And we're so very grateful. But between Mr. Gregory and Dr. Fritz, the residents and the members of our community can be very proud that, of the work that's being done on behalf of the taxpayers of this area. We're very, very excited and very, very grateful. I mean, this is one of those things where everything came together very nicely. And sometimes in life, it doesn't always work out that way, but it certainly did in this particular case. And thanks to all the parties involved. Folks, you've had an amazing board. And I think Dr. Fritz is going to find that out very, very quickly. And I think that that's something that should be noted.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, any need for an executive session? Okay, I hear the next regular meeting is June 18th.
That is correct, third Tuesday.
And the work session?
As soon as you can get it, Scott.
Yeah.
As soon as I can get from everybody.
Yeah.